Part of six o'clock, I'd like to call the August twenty second Madison City Council Meeting to order. And we have Pastor Richardson with Restoration Church here tonight, lead us in prayer.
I feel a little funny when my back turns. Good evening. Wow, thank you for this opportunity to come before you, the opportunity to be a part of this meeting. I truly believe that it is the cohesion of what we do with our community to allow us to come in, so thank you. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for the opportunity for those who serve the people of this city. And as they meet tonight, Father God, help this council to act with the character and the conviction. Help them to listen and understand with goodwill, to help them to speak with charity and restraint. For your word says, let us come reason together. Grant them the spirit of service, remind us all that we are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders and pillars of the community needs. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of all people who disagree with the decisions of the outcome. And lastly, Father, renew their strength and give them joy of helping them build a community worth the human person. I'd like to just close with this scripture, and to the council and to the community. The Lord bless you, and the Lord keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you, and be gracious to you. And the Lord turn his face towards you and give you peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is that we are the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Can I get the real call please?
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seifert?
Here.
We have a quorum, so we will move forward. We have a couple of changes to the printed agenda. On a presentation of reports, under me, it needs to say resolution number two oh two two dash two two five R. Instead of proposed ordinance, and we need, under engineering, we need to mark out proposed. And just say resolution, and that's two two six dash A. Those are the only changes on the printed agenda.
I'm sorry, what was the first one Greg?
Under me, under this resolution, if there's proposed ordinance, needs to be marked out, and that's a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
You're adding a resolution on engineering?
No, it's changing.
Oh, two two five to two two six, sorry.
Yeah, it's called dash two two five.
Got it.
It's two two six dash R.
Got it.
Other than that, we'll move to the minutes and ask for approval of the minutes from August eighth.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, I've got one piece on that, we would, I would like to change that Ms. Gary, the phrase claims could be removed, and add in she states in lieu of. Is there any other changes? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes. Presentation and awards, and we have Madison Police Department Service Awards.
Hi, we're here tonight to recognize Captain Mike Allen, who has served for thirty years in the city of Madison. Mike started in ninety-two, and has worked throughout his career in different areas of the police department, largely Uniform Patrol, SWAT, things like that. He currently commands the largest division in the Madison Police Department, and that's the Uniform Patrol Division. Mike, just wanted to say thank you on behalf of all the citizens and the police department, through years of excellent service. We're gonna also recognize Sergeant Steve Reeves, but if we could hold that till the next meeting. He was out yesterday on the ugly incident we had yesterday, and has worked a lot of hours.
Yes sir.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you. Next we have public comments, and Ms. Lisa, did we have anybody that had? All right.
You had mentioned to me at finance that you had people that had signed up for comments.
On the agenda it says Madison Forward.
We got Madison Forward, yeah, I've got that. I know there was somebody else. Yes, Ms. Terry.
Good evening Mayor and Council, Terry Johnson in District Six. I'm here on behalf of Madison Forward, and Jim Ross is stuck in the airport at Atlanta, and he would have been here with me tonight, but he can't make it home in time. I'm here because, well, Madison Forward, as you probably know, is a citizens group that is leading the effort to educate the citizens of Madison about the mayor, the council manager form of government, and we're doing a petition drive to allow the residents of Madison to vote on the form of government. A couple of weeks ago, I was listening to the council meeting, live streaming it at home, and there was somebody who made public comments that seemed to be criticizing the council for some actions that you had not taken, so I wanted to just come up here and set the record straight, and explain exactly what happened. The person who spoke to you a couple of weeks ago made some claims that, in fact, I wrote them down just so I would present them accurately. The speaker claimed that Madison Forward flyers were passed out at Discovery Middle School, and that the city business is encroaching on school business, and you need to explain why these flyers were allowed in our schools, and that's what she asked of you. So I just wanted to let you know that on August the sixth, there was a barbecue festival held at Discovery Middle School in the parking lot of Discovery Middle School. And the sponsors of that event were all given tables, and they could promote their business. They could, there were some that were promoting political candidates, there were some who were selling crafts, and that kind of thing, and one of the sponsors of the barbecue festival was, is a member of Madison Forward, and she said, I don't really need to promote anything, I'd really like to use this as an opportunity to educate our citizens. So, members of Madison Forward, I was there that day, we came, we sat at a table behind a little banner that said Madison Forward, and we had the flyers. We didn't walk around passing them out, we didn't go into the school, we were in, you know, just out there in the open, in public, and the only way anyone would get a flyer would be if they came to our table and asked us questions about the initiative, the ballot initiative, and if they asked for a flyer. So, I just wanted to let everybody here know that council was not there, we didn't tell y'all we were doing that. As far as I know, you hadn't seen the flyers till the speaker brought them up. The impression was given by the speaker's comments that somehow you had dropped off a truckload of flyers at Discovery and asked them to pass them out to the students or parents or something like that. So I just wanted to correct that impression for the public, that we were at a barbecue festival in the parking lot, at a sponsor's booth when we did that. And if anybody has any questions about Madison Forward, I'll stay till the end of the meeting, and if you want to know what we do and what we don't do, I'll be glad to tell you.
Thank you, Doctor Johnson.
Is there anyone else I'd like to address, mayor and council tonight? If not, we'll move forward with, oh, okay, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'd just like to say to Mike Allen and Stephen Reeves, thank you for your service. I've known Mike Allen since Jesus, well, not since Jesus was a baby, because I've been here since Jesus was a baby. But I've known Mike Allen since he was knee-highed or a grasshopper. And we've been through good times, bad times, hard times, but nothing will ever change. My love for Mike Allen, he's a good guy, you all need to know that, the whole city needs to know that. We're lucky to have him in our police force, Stephen Reeves is another good guy. And to believe that he, it's hard for me to believe that he served twenty years in Madison, because his kids are stalked, his social media, and I'm like, dang, his kids are like grown now. I mean, you know, it's just amazing. But Stephen Reeves is another good guy, and he will, whatever he was promoted to, or if it's just an award for his time of service, we got two fine officers serving us. So thank you, and thank you for passing, making the change in the resolution.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
That's all, we'll move to the Consent Agenda and Finance Committee report.
Hey, the Finance Committee met last Tuesday on August sixteenth, we reviewed the items on the consent agenda. We also discussed a resolution regarding the rebuild Alabama gas tax. As you know, council each year by August thirty-first, we have to pass a resolution to get access to that one source of gas tax money, and you will see that item later in the agenda under engineering. We also discussed our budget schedule, and we're doing something new this year. We are still planning on passing the budget at the September twenty-sixth meeting, but we have moved back our dates to present the budget at our September twelfth meeting. We're going to have a presentation outlining what we're proposing, and what's coming out of the mayor's office. And then we will make the budget available the next morning on the finance page on September thirteenth, so people will have an opportunity to review the budget and send in questions or comments before we actually pass the budget on September twenty-sixth. That is in an effort to increase transparency, to allow people to have a chance to absorb it. And so, that's all that we covered, and with that, I would like to move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
Next is presentation of reports, and we'll start with mayor.
All right, and I will just get two quick updates on meetings that are coming up or events. The first one is following up on governance transition. Again, the next step in, just again, I say educating the public, but giving the public a chance to ask questions is to the mayors. It is reset now for Monday, September twelfth, it's from twelve to two at the Madison Library. Along with myself will be, Ron Anders is the mayor from Auburn, and he'll be up to answer any questions that folks have. And then the second one that we're really excited about is from our Madison Chamber of Commerce, where we used to have Connect Event, which was basically the mayor state of the city. We're going to have that, but we're changing the name and the venue. So that will be called Celebrate Madison. The event will be held Friday, November fourth. Basically, I'm not quite sure what time it will open, but the public is invited to Toyota Field. And will be given tickets, as far as I've heard, for a beverage, a hot dog, and the ability to, sometime I'm thinking in the seven, seven-thirty range, to have a quick presentation by the mayor as far as an update on the city. I know we're looking to have some music that will be a part of that, and also hopefully fireworks. A little bit different than it's been before, but we're excited and hope the community will come out to share and celebrate Madison at Madison, at Toyota Field, and again, it's Friday, November fourth. And this is put on by our Madison Chamber of Commerce, it's their largest fundraiser. They have sponsors that will be in turn, help support, again, the free things that the city would be able to enjoy in the public. So with that said, that's all I have.
Very good. This is number one.
Yes sir, the first item I have for your consideration is resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two twenty-seven dash R. And this is an approval, a request to approve an increase in the job classification plan that we have within the city from twenty-one steps to twenty-five steps. And this would be for all pay plans throughout our entire workforce. We're wanting to do this so that we can retain our valued and experienced employees that have been here for many years. As everyone knows, we're in a very competitive market right now with employees, and HR Committee met before the meeting tonight unanimously approved this. HR Director Towery is here if anyone has any questions. But we would like to recognize and honor and reward these longtime employees that we have. And with that, I recommend approval and make a motion to do so.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote please?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes.
And then I just have a couple of other items. Wanted to say that I got an email, I'm recycling is delayed throughout most of the city for a couple of days. It should have been picked up on Thursday, they believe it'll be picked up by this Wednesday. And I attended a newcomers fair on August thirteenth, we had eighteen vendors there, including Parks and Rec was there. I was able to share a map that had all of council and mayor's business cards on it. We got to meet approximately two hundred and forty-nine people, it was a fabulous turnout. We didn't know if we were gonna have ten there, or two hundred, and we were blessed to meet two hundred and fifty people, the majority of whom live in the county. But I thought it was interesting to see where in the city the...
But I thought it was interesting to see where in the city the, the new folks moved. And so my hat's off to Carolyn Regal with the Madison Library. She just did a fabulous job. And thank you to Mary Beth for the excursion books, the bags and the hand sanitizer. We were able to give out a lot of goodies. And we're hoping to make this a semi-annual event, so we'll probably have it again in the spring. And wanted to also give a shout out to Bebe, uh, keeping her in our thoughts and her prayers and our prayers as she recovers. And she's watching us on TV. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Edition number two.
Yes, um, first of all, I wanted to mention, um, in the consent agenda, we accepted a, um, a five hundred dollar donation from the Starlings for the police department. And that was, um, of note. And also at the last, um, Madison Utilities meeting we had last Monday, um, something interesting was brought up was that, um, some of the areas in Longston County and where developers are proposing developments, where Madison Utilities has said they're not going to provide utilities. Those developers are now seeking out private utility companies to serve them. And I don't, we don't know exactly how that looks. But, um, that's another new wrinkle in this whole, are we going to grow? How are we going to keep our roads up to date fast enough and all that? Because if Huntsville Utilities isn't reining anybody in and Madison Utilities can't rein anybody in and the city can't rein anybody in, then they're coming no matter what. So that could open up the Wild Wild West as far as growth is concerned. Not that there's a whole lot of Wild Wild West between us and Huntsville, but just something that's new.
You're talking about putting a water system in?
That's going to be very interesting to see that.
But it's, it's something that's been mentioned and I wanted to go ahead and get it on your radar so you'd be aware that that is being talked about.
All right.
It seems crazy to me, but who knows?
Is a private entity able to provide that service without some type of franchise fee agreement with the city?
Well, these, um, new developments aren't necessarily going to be in the city. Because Madison Utilities serves-
Oh, you're talking about outside the city and not annexed in?
Right.
Okay.
Because what's happening now is the areas where Ma- the city of Madison has said, "We're not going to annex you." They've decided, "We don't care if you're going to annex us. We're just going to stay in the county."
Okay.
And then Madison Utilities was kind of a stopgap. And Huntsville Utilities was kind of a stopgap. But now you've got areas where neither of those utilities are going to serve them and they're still coming.
I think at some point, the economy will catch up.
I think that something will happen, for sure.
I mean, at some point, supply and demand catches up.
I don't understand how that can be economically feasible, but that's what they're saying. And, um, on that cheerful note, I'm done.
Uh, Teddy's out. Uh, I have one, I have one resolution tonight. It's two twenty-two dash two two five R. Approval of three hundred and sixty dollars from, from council special projects to provide Madison Police Citizen Advisory Committee with banners, um, for, for the street festival.
Move to, uh, yeah, move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion? If not, can, can we get the vote, please?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye. Motion passes. That's all I have. And edition number five.
Um, I have one report. I had the privilege of participating in the leadership Greater Huntsville flagship L thirty-six, uh, class. Uh, a little over a week ago, we had an opening retreat. And I'm on the steering committee, so I have a three-year commitment to, um, Shepherd, uh, the cla- next three classes. Uh, congratulations to Chief Gandy, who was accepted into the class. There were, um, hundreds of applications for fifty-four slots, so, um, congratulations to him. And, uh, we, we heard from different leaders, uh, throughout the three-day opening retreat. And one of the things, uh, one of the people we heard from, we were at the Toyota Field in Trash Panda Stadium. And, uh, the general manager, Garrett Farman, who you've, uh, had come before us before, uh, he addressed the group. And he shared a number of the challenges that the Trash Pandas faced in just opening the stadium, uh, during COVID and even afterwards. And, and I had been aware of a lot of those challenges, of course, because as a council, we've worked with them, um, in helping them get opened. But one of the challenges he shared with us was when, uh, they finally did get to have opening night. Um, they had, uh, worked with a temp agency and they were supposed to have sixty workers show up for opening and two showed up. And that was just, that was one of the challenges that I had not heard about. And so now they're working with a lot of nonprofit organizations, booster clubs. It's a really great way of getting people who they can rely on to show up and help work concessions. So he did a great job in, um, just showing, uh, the stadium around to the class. Um, and then, of course, we closed with Julian Butler and a lot of you who have heard him, uh, speak. He gave a great leadership speech. And he has this quote that he uses, uh, in each speech by Teddy Roosevelt. Um, and I want to share it with you because, uh, I think the class really appreciated it and they got great reviews, um, from his speech. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who's actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcomings. But who does actually strive to do the deeds? Who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions? Who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement? And who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." And that's all I have.
Very good. Edition number six.
I just have very few things to say tonight. I know, that's surprising. Uh, first, uh, the Madison Police and Citizens Advisory Committee. Their next meeting is just going to be reviewing, um, the, the committee's bylaws. So if anybody is interested in being more involved there, thinks there needs to be changes, please attend that meeting. Um, so you can be more of an active voice in that. Uh, second, Madison Street Festival, it's only five weeks away. I know, I can't believe it's almost October either. It's the first Oc- first weekend of October. We are still looking for volunteers. So if anybody would like to come out, and even just for a couple hours that day, just give your time to either, you know, work in the play area, work with the teens. Just in any way, there's so many possibilities for that, for that day. But we're all looking forward to it. Um, I think it's going to be a really great festival. I'm a little biased on it, but we have worked so hard. And I think it'll be a lot of fun for the citizens to come back again and meet as a city. Um, for those of you unaware, last time we had about thirty-five thousand people show up. So it's not just a little bitty thing anymore. Um, a lot of work goes into it, but it's a great, it's a great way for everyone to come together that day. So if you can volunteer, great. Um, uh, and really, that is about it. We are still working on the school board selection and still working on the process of that. And as it all comes together, everyone will be brought into what's going on. Other than that, have a great day. Glad to be here.
Yeah, I got a couple of things tonight, I guess. Uh, basketball registration is ongoing. Uh, this Friday is your last day to register. So I know, uh, Cory and his team do a great job in, in, uh, putting that program on for our youth. So, uh, I'd like to see a lot of folks register. And then the other thing, I want to hand it to Chief Gandy and his team, uh, yesterday. Um, so I live in Walden Preserve and so my neighborhood, uh, had a little bit of excitement yesterday afternoon. And, uh, I appreciate the way you and your team handled that. Um, I know, uh, a personal friend of mine, him and his, his wife and daughter were actually at the, uh, clubhouse when, um, the, uh, I guess bring it, when the situation happened. And, uh, um, they saw the apprehension and, and signs of the suspect and, uh, just that whole scene and how your officers handled that. Uh, especially with their daughter, uh, that was in, in the vehicle at the time, uh, was very professional and very, uh, caring. So I, I appreciate that and how they did that. I know that's through, through your leadership as well. So thank you and please pass that on to your officers. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
We have one, um, we have one board appointment tonight for the, uh, Hempsey Board of Directors. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate John Seifert.
Is there any other? If not, we'll place John back on air through acclamation. Uh, public hearings.
Sorry, John, you're stuck on me.
We have one, uh, public hearing proposal ordinance, two oh two two one eighty-three. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Um, this is an ordinance to change the, uh, zoning text amendment to change the zoning ordinance as it pertains to mini storage facilities in the B two district. It's a request submitted by National Retail Development LLC. Um, and I'm going to review just a little bit about our B two standards so you have a context for what the request is. The maximum height allowed in our B two district is thirty-five feet. And that's the same height maximum that we have for most of our residential districts. Uh, B two district development, uh, requires screening buffers when property is adjacent to residentially zoned property. There's shielding, uh, for lights that are required. There's architectural treatments. Um, it is, um, has the most requirements in terms of adjacency to residential when we're looking at commercial development. The other types of uses that are allowed in B two include offices, restaurants, stores, any type of, um, medical clinic, health club, service business and car washes. So as we looked at our existing B two standards and what the applicant was requesting, one of the other considerations was where our B two districts are located. Um, B two is that dark red color. It's predominantly along County Line Road and Hughes Road on, um, Highway seventy-two and Madison Boulevard. We have B three zoning, which is a little bit more of an intense zoning. Um, currently, storage facilities are allowed in our industrial area and in our B three area. Hence, the applicant's request to allow them in B two. So as we, um, talked about this request of the applicant, they suggested some items for us to consider. And, uh, this all went to our Planning Commission and the Planning Commission and staff are supporting, um, the request. So what we're recommending is to allow these mini storage uses in our B two as a conditional use. Uh, the conditions are as follows. That a minimum of five percent of the square footage has to be Class A office space. Um, reasoning for that is we have a limited amount of B two area. We want to encourage job creation and providing services beyond storage for our residents. Um, this was an item that was suggested by the applicant. They've done, uh, office space in some of their other indoor storage facilities. Um, staff is also recommending that these only be located on property with frontage on a collector or arterial road. Um, Hughes and County Line would both qualify as this. However, um, Plaza Boulevard has some B two zoning. It is not classified as a collector or an arterial. So therefore, these types of uses wouldn't be allowed on Plaza. Uh, we currently do not have a def- definition of mini storage facilities in our zoning ordinance. So as part of this, we're recommending a definition. And basically, these storage facilities are different from, uh, what you might see on Celtic. If you're familiar with the ones on Celtic or the ones under construction on County Line Road. Um, these types of fac- facilities are only allowed to access from the inside. So they don't have the roll-up doors that you drive up to. And our specific definition that we're proposing is this. It's an establishment providing secure climate-controlled indoor storage materials that are accessed from within the secured building location and not from the exterior, meaning you cannot drive up. Um, it does not include self-service, uh, storage facility, hazardous material storage facility or an indoor wholesale and distribution facility. And finally, the applicant has given us a sample elevation of what these might look like. Um, this would be within the thirty-five foot height limit, uh, that is allowed within our B two district. So it's very similar to, say, an office building, right? Uh, you're going to enter into this facility, um, and access your storage unit from the inside. So it'd be like going into an office building, walking in the corridor and finding your facility. The applicant indicated a lot of their users, um, uh, well, there are a couple of categories. One are homeowners who store like their Christmas decorations or their different seasonal decorations, their lawn furniture, that type of thing in these facilities. Um, and another one of their, um, users are apartment dwellers. And we're seeing a lot of apartments, uh, coming forward in the market. They don't have the same amount of storage space and so this is attractive to that component as well. At the Planning Commission public hearing, we didn't have anybody come to address this item. Uh, Planning Commission is supporting the request as a staff. And finally, the applicant's representative is here this evening if you want to, um, ask him any questions. Thank you.
With that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone like to address Councilor, Mayor?
I don't know if anybody else noticed that. We don't need that. That's three and a half story building. And do we always take what the developer says? Was that really what we want next to our residential?
Shouldn't be too.
It looked like a, like a prison. Thirty-five feet is three and a half stories and you're going to put this in residential? Because why? Because the person who wants to build it recommended it and gave you that drawing?
Yeah, Ms. Taylor, please, address us, please.
I just don't, I, I can't see this passing. It's awful. That's thirty-five feet. It's ten feet a story. So that's three and a half stories and you're going to put this next to residential families? Okay, I'm not happy with it. I would think, we should think more of our city than to do something like this.
Anyone else? If not, we'll close by, by the, oh, yeah.
I do know the owners and the agent are very good people. I want to say that the artistic drawing that they have up, I think will be good in our community. Also, uh, I do know them and they're great people and I think they'll do a many, make me some jobs.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mary Beth, can you put up, please, again, what the other, uh, currently the other permissible, uh, uses in B two, please? So my understanding is this is currently what can be in B two without any modifications to the plan. So you could have a car wash next to a residential, uh, establishment.
Yes.
Home. Thank you.
And you can have an office that's thirty-five feet.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd had a question also, Mary Beth. Is there a saturation point for storage facilities in Madison? It seems like we have a lot and I just wondered, are we putting in more than the market will bear by doing this?
Uh, well, we haven't studied it, you know, from a, um, a strict data analytics standpoint. Uh, we have the facility that's located on Celtic. We have a facility under construction on County Line Road. There is a facility on, on Chestnut at the corner of Wal- Walteriana and Chestnut. Those are the three that I'm aware of that are in Madison. Uh, there is also one in unincorporated area out on Huntsville Brown's Berry Road. Um, so I get requests, um, for storage facilities about as frequently as I get requests for multifamily. So that's a lot. So there's a lot of interest in the market. Um, for the most part, we, um, I will say, uh, you know, our code is very restrictive on them. Um, and, you know, we're able to deter most of them because we have a limited amount of commercial land. And, and, uh, we don't want it, those types of facilities, especially the more traditional ones, um, to be located on our arterials. The reason that we thought this was an interesting, um, proposal was because they could make the architecture fit with what our standards are, which are pretty, um, a pretty high standard for our B two area. They were willing to work with us on the height. Originally, they came in and we're talking about doing a taller structure, which you, you see a lot of. Um, they were willing to bring the, the height down to the thirty-five feet. Um, they, uh, they offered to create some office space within the structure. Um, so I, I don't know in terms of the absorption. I will tell you, I don't know any, uh, developer who goes in to lose money. And so it seems to be that there's a lot of demand for these in the, the market because we're seeing a lot of requests for them or people inquiring about them.
Okay, so just, um, clear, once we open the store, then more can come in?
Um, I suppose it's possible. Um, I suppose it's possible, uh, you know, um, and, uh, I don't know that there's many of them that would be able to do the model that this particular company is able to do, where they're going to incorporate the office space. They're going to be able to make it pencil, limiting it to the thirty-five feet in height. I have not, we have not had, uh, most of them want to come in and do the conventional, you know, roll-up garage door, kind of more of the industrial look. This is the first one that's come in, um, in the last five years that's wanted to do something more upscale.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have the, uh, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two two four dash R.
Is that supposed to be under public hearings?
Yes, I was, I was going to read it, then I was going to open it. Uh, just, uh, for the, uh, weed lean assessment for, for vacant lot. All of Waltrana. One nine oh four, and vacant lot, z- zero, Shelton Road, and three twenty-three pen- pension road. So the next resolution deals with the assessment of weed leans on the, uh, stated, um, stated ear- earlier, during the summer twenty twenty-two pursuant to the city's Local Weed Abatement Act, Act number twenty sixteen dash two oh five. The city, uh, cut overgrown grass and weeds on these properties, and now it is time for the city council to consider the imposition of the city's cost as weed lean on the properties. We've been presented with items, reports showing the cost of remove these weeds. Uh, the reports have been sent to the owners of the lots. We'll not have a public hearing on, on this matter if there's any owner of the property in the audience who wishes to address these reports, or anyone else can wish to address council on this. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to like to address Councilor Mayor on these three lots? If not, we'll close the, um, the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Denzine?
A motion passes. Next is department reports. We'll start with engineering.
All right, so I have, uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash two twenty-six R. Uh, the adit- uh, the adoption of transportation plan for funds to be received during the twenty twenty-three fiscal year pursuant to the Rebuild Alabama Act. This is the twenty nineteen gas tax that, uh, Councilmember Bartlett referred to earlier.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion?
Can you?
I think it was Karen.
Can you unpack that a little bit, what that means, please?
Uh, I can. So, uh, and actually, Brian, I can offer a little bit more background too, if, if necessary, but we, as part of the twenty nineteen gas tax, have to identify a road project that we're going to apply those funds to. Um, and the amount is a, a little bit hard to predict exactly what we're going to get, so we kind of, we kind of shoot for a range there. Uh, this, this section is, is going to be for Sullivan Road, uh, from about the railroad tracks near front, north to Mill Road. That's what we're kind of identifying there. Uh, and this, this estimate, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, was based on twenty twenty-two, when we did a twenty twenty-two evaluation of all of our roads. We did a study for those and, and laid out some general costs, and then added some ten percent here, twenty percent there, just to kind of get a, a, a rough cost. But we, we identified this section, um, and it falls kind of within what we would expect to receive from that gas tax, so that's what, that's where we're at. This lets us, this gives us an opportunity now to, uh, request for those funds, um, but, but this was the, the deadline was to do it this.
And you said which, which road is it again?
Sullivan Road.
Sullivan.
Front Street, right, basically right down the railroad track, north to, uh, Mill.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and I think at the Finance Committee meeting, where Ms. Bartlett brought that up, which was very appreciative, both these guys being new, it was something that we hadn't necessarily, any of us followed back up on, so her diligence helped us. And I think in that case, we didn't at that point have anything completely designated for that, which is why it said there's nothing designated for road, that money right there. There's a, in our budget this year, I think there's probably about fourteen million dollars that are available for road projects, so.
This is not part of that.
And put out there that there's no money for, in Madison's twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget for roads, which is not true. We just didn't have anything allocated for this at the time, which we now do, and if you guys approve, this is what it'll go for.
Right.
And all that I would add is basically the Rebuild Alabama Act, just give the people hope, just making, making sure the cities have a proactive, respective plan for what you're going to do, so they don't just retroactive, say, "Oh, well, we've been on that." We just have, just one of those things that we have to designate, uh, discuss, and then we actually have to post it around this law. Just one of those extra sections we have to do to make sure that we qualify for these funds.
Right, and it, and it stipulates that a, a transportation plan has to be in place, and that's what the function of this is, not, this is not the transportation plan that some people may refer to in the public, as if this is a, you know, this is a non-specific, a transportation plan, and that's why it's regarded as, as a.
And I will say on that is, uh, it, because the three hundred thousand will, will go, three sixty will go so quickly to one project. There's no need to actually designate a separate plan. The resolution makes it very clear what it is, what section, how much it's in. This qualifies underneath the act, and will, uh, absolutely meet the requirement as far as what we have to propose and publish.
Okay.
What would happen if we didn't pass this resolution tonight?
Well, uh, we have a deadline of August the thirty-first. In order to have the council approve this plan, if the council was not happy with the plan, um, and we had to go back to the drawing board, uh, we wouldn't be able to meet that, that deadline, would be, I guess.
So therefore, we would not receive the money from the state?
Well, we wouldn't, we, I, I will say this. We would not be able to meet each and every requirement prerequisite to getting the money. Uh, there's some, some ways that we can remedy that after the fact, but I, I think that, uh, August thirty-first is the deadline, and if we miss the deadline, then it just kind of puts us behind, you know, to, you know, to, you put us behind the eight ball as far as making sure we can get our ducks in row in order to do that. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you. And I think in the past, we had brought this up at the July work session, uh, so that we would have time to discuss options, and then if we didn't like what you were presenting, we, and so going forward, we can just pencil in July to discuss the Rebuild Alabama Act allocation.
Any other discussion? If not, can I get the vote, please?
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Bartlett?
Aye.
A motion passes. Mayor Beth, you up again?
This is just a first reading, and this is for Proposed Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two one two. And this is for vacation of a portion of, of utility and drainage easement. And you can see that green, um, colored area. It's in the side and rear yard. It's a very oddly configured, um, property. It's a single-family residence, and they are looking to put a pool in their backyard, and, and so all of the agencies have signed off on vacating this. Um, it'll be on your next agenda to ask you to approve that. Thank you.
Illegal.
Good evening. This, uh, this happens pretty straightforward. What we have here is an ordinance in order to, uh, accept a drainage easement from the Board of Education in Madison, uh, City Madison. What they, what this is, is, as I understand, they approved this on July the twelfth, uh, and it's for a proposed elementary school. It's going to be in Limestone County. That's off of, uh, County Line Road. That's the information that was provided, so.
All right. Very good. Thanks so much. Any miscellaneous business or announcements?
Um, I just wanted to ask, we haven't had a work session since March, I think, and we've got a couple of things, like, um, Karen recommended, the board, um, appointee, wrapping up what we're going to do with impact fees, CIP projects. Do we have a work session planned for September to?
I don't have one yet.
Talk about, like, what we're doing with, like, the Board of Education. I think he leaves this week, right? August twenty-fifth or something? Is this last?
Twenty-third, I think this is.
Twenty-third, so is there a plan on what we're doing with that?
Yeah, I was waiting till, till Teddy got back, so we could all, you know, have, I don't know what, when he's available, but we're, we're going to work through that. I don't know what that is until we have the full council back.
So we'll just have a called meeting, a special called meeting, to discuss it?
We'll, we'll have to announce it.
Okay.
But I, I don't, I don't, I don't have an exact date.
Okay.
That'd be planned.
Okay, so, but the plan is to kind of announce a meeting where we're going to come together and discuss it? I guess I'm just trying.
Maybe. I, I don't, I really don't know yet, so I, I was going to wait till Teddy got back and.
Okay.
All kind of, there's some want to work sessions, some don't, so I'm kind of stuck in the middle trying to juggle both sides of it.
Okay.
So we're waiting for Teddy to get back to decide when we're going to have another work session? Like, is that the?
About the Board, about the Board of Education.
Okay, but as far as work sessions going forward?
Well, I think that, are we going to do one with the budget in September? Do you want to do that?
No, uh, we're going to do it at the September twelfth meeting. That's when it, there's a presentation, and then, um, we could discuss it in finance after that. There's a finance meeting between the September twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So if there were questions there, um, but we weren't, because we were adding the public budget hearing, we weren't going to do a work session. The, the work session, the public doesn't get to speak. I mean, it would help the council, but they'll get to come to the finance. We weren't planning on doing a work session for the budget. Uh, we're not anticipating any difficulties. That would require, um.
Now, we've had some really good meetings with department heads, uh, last week, this week, you know, part of our goal is to get this to you guys at the Finance Committee by the end of this week, I think.
Yeah, so the mayor's office has really had to speed up its timetable to get it to us, so that you would have more time to, uh, you.
So, goes back to, that's been our primary focus, which, with that, I mean, from a, you're all talking about the school board situation, I understand, but.
Mm-hmm.
Our budget, we'll hand it off to you guys. I like the fact we're going to have a community meeting, or in essence, the meeting where the, we can present a lot of what's on there, kind of go through a lot of that to give more information, um, and then carry that forward, so.
We'll get some dates put, put, put together.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Appreciate it.
That's it. Mo- motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.